[916.24]
What was on?
Wondering why we didn't start at six. Okay, so, um, good evening, uh, welcome to-
Are we live? Okay, good.
Welcome to the public meeting. My name is Jerry Barnes. I'm the city engineer and public works director. Um, like to welcome everybody. Uh, we're doing a public outreach, uh, meeting, uh, for the design and construction where the, uh, what we know as the Connie's Bridge is the Upper Pinell Creek Bridge. Um, I'd like to introduce my team that's with me tonight on the monitor, uh, above. Uh, we have Matt Truitt from EPS. And, um, below who's going to be running the meeting is Rick Powers from Rick Powers Consulting. Um, these consultants have been, uh, very involved in this project and, and getting the design started. Um, as part of that, uh, is the public outreach where we wish to, uh, know from you what you would like. And, uh, and we will tell you if we can afford it or whether we can, uh, um, whether we need to do something different or not. So, uh, Rick, you want to, um, start out and, uh, we can go from here?
Okay, I'll give a little introductory comment and then, uh, when I finish that, I'll get the PowerPoint hooked up. Uh, but what I do want to start off with is we've been working on this, as Jerry was saying, for about six years now.
Rick, can you point the mic down, Sergeant?
Well, we've been working on this project for about two years now. And while I was still with Davis Engineering, we did a report. The city had wanted us to analyze and review, uh, seven of their deficient bridges of the city. We did that as part of a special project. That part of that project and the outcome of that project was, uh, doing reports.
Okay, we'll start over. Technical department. Okay, so what we did was we've been working on this project for approximately six years. And, uh, we started off by looking at all of the city's deficient bridges. There were a total of seven of those. And during that process, we compiled a report. There were two things that the city was wanting to look at at that time. Number one was looking at the structural, uh, sufficiency ratings of the bridges. And number two, what, what could be done to repair those bridges or whether or not they required replacement? We did, uh, complete that report, uh, in 2016. Uh, there's copies of it, uh, here. I believe there's, the city has copies as well. And, uh, the first report dealt with, uh, all seven bridges, uh, we're talking about Connie's Bridge. And it had one of the lowest, uh, sufficiency ratings, which determines the load capacity, the ability for the structural components of the bridge to function properly. Uh, that rating came in sufficiently low and, uh, therefore made it eligible for replacement. It also is, uh, functionally obsolete, which meet, means it does not meet the standards for width and some of the drainage requirements, uh, for passing flows. And also it, uh, doesn't meet the requirements for scour. It's what they call scour susceptible. And if you've gone under that bridge or round columns there, those round columns, uh, cause eddies to form as the water flows through, it's, it's eroded down and, uh, compromise the, uh, structural ability of the, of, of capacity of those columns. Not that it's going to fall down tomorrow, but it's, it requires fixing. Uh, we did an analysis. We looked at, uh, two options. Could we repair the bridge as it was? Uh, and as it turned out, we did an economic analysis. The repairs were going to cost just about as much as replacing it. So at that time, we, uh, we put together a list of, um, projects for the city. Uh, we ranked all the bridges, uh, for the entire city and came out with, um, that was the number one priority for replacement was the Connie's Upper Pinell Creek slash Connie's Bridge. Also, number two ranked was Cottonwood Bridge, uh, just on the other side, uh, of town hall here toward Lois's Trailer Park. That also, uh, has a low sufficiency rating. We also applied and received for funding for that. So that'll be in the future. So we actually were very successful, uh, in getting, uh, both of these bridges, uh, are now funded and will be moving forward. And that was because they're, it's more economical to replace them than to try to repair them. It's like a car. When it gets to some point, it's, it's more economical just to replace it. So that's where we're at on both of these bridges. Do you want to add anything else?
Just to interject, uh, the bridge was structurally deficient enough to where, uh, after a three-year cycle of trying to figure out what we were doing and so forth, it dropped even more. And, um, we figured within, uh, another three-year cycle, we would have to close the bridge. So, um, if we don't do anything with it, it's going to become structurally deficient enough where closure is, uh, the city's main option. And so, um, be- because the repairs, uh, were going to cost as much as the replacement. So, uh, either we find the funding for it and replace it or repair it, or, or we close the bridge. And the, the second was, was not an option. That's why we chased funding on this so hard.
Uh, Jerry, and I know we're going to get into the, the primary, um, question and answers in the, the presentation. I want to read off the information as to how people can contact us and participate in this meeting.
Great idea.
But, but do you want to give a, just an overview? We're taking public comment for how long?
Where our public comment is, uh, going to reach out to August 15th.
August 15th is when we prefer to have comments back and, and then we'll review those. And then we'll analyze those with Matt and then we'll come up with responses to those comments on, uh, what, what the recommendations would be to address those.
We extended it out there, Rick and I, uh, and Matt decided that we extended far enough because of, uh, uh, our current capability of all getting together. Um, you know, uh, as long as we're, are doing a lot of stuff over the computer, we thought we would give it, uh, a little more time.
So, and then, and then let everybody know that's watching that if you want to, if they want to participate in this meeting and ask yourself, Rick or Matt, a, a question, um, they can email us at council@globeaz.gov. And so, um, and we'll be checking that email. And as we get questions, we can pose them, read them, and then you can respond and it'll be on the YouTube. Also, if you wanted to call in and personally ask a question, um, we would ask that you text Shelley at the city council, um, cell phone at nine two eight two oh oh zero one five four. If you text her and say, I'd like to make some comments. And then at the appropriate time, Shelley will, will call and we'll, we'll bring you in onto the, the speakers and you can participate in the meeting that way. So we ask you to, um, text first and then we will call them. Let me give you the phone numbers again, um, nine two eight two hundred zero one five four for the, the cell phone. And then to email us, council@globeaz.gov. So anytime during the meeting.
And, and, um, if you, um, correct me if I'm wrong, if you send us an email afterwards, we'll still get that.
Yes.
And we'll be able to respond to it then before, uh, August 15th.
And then I'm working right now to get the handouts up onto the, we didn't want to put them up prior to the meeting. I'm working to get the handout and the PowerPoint, um, up onto the website. So those at home can, can view that. You'll see it on the screen, but we'll have the handouts first and get them so they can pull them down.
We do have handouts, uh, here thanks to Shelley. So I think also, uh, you were going to have some printed copies at the desk here.
Yes, we, we can-
Off front that people can grab if they come pay their water bill or whatnot.
Yeah, so for the, for the, till August 15th, we'll make sure we have a cop, um, uh, copies of the handouts at the front counter and then go to the window since City Hall proper is not open and ask the, the staff and they'll give you a copy.
And, and also if you send us an email and request a copy, we'll send you an electronic version of it.
And also I understand this meeting i- is obviously recorded. So if you didn't get to watch it live, you can watch the recording of it and still get the same information and be able to comment as well. Thanks to the technology.
Yeah, it'll be on, listed on our YouTube channel. If you go to the link on the city website where it says, watch live stream. And then you, if it's not showing right then, then you click on the, um, the city globe link there and all of our, um, past meetings come up and this one will come up too. And, and Danny, correct me if I'm saying that wrong, but, but again, you can get to our YouTube chan- YouTube channel and find the history of all our meetings. So I think we got, we got that covered. We got a lot of different ways people can participate and we have, um, till August 15th to do that participation. So thank you.
Go ahead. Okay, so, uh, if Daniel's ready, we can go ahead. We got a short PowerPoint presentation and then we're going to open it up, uh, to answer your questions. We will leave the, the slide that is the recommended, uh, approach that we want to go forward with. That's what we're here today basically is to get two things. Number one, get concurrence on this recommended approach. And number two, any comments you have regarding this recommended approach. And we'll get into why it's recommended here shortly. So if you want to put the slideshow up and you put it on the screen here.
I think, Matt, you have the slideshow on your computer? You can share it through Zoom?
I could, yeah.
Okay, I think that's easiest.
Yeah. We'll put, put, uh, the slideshow up and we'll go through that and, um, you'll be able to put it on, uh, YouTube as well.
One second. Let me, uh, make sure I share the right screen.
So, um, at some point, Rick, go through the history of funding and all that.
Yeah.
Because I think that's important for the public to know.
Okay, now while that's coming up, Jerry had asked me to, to go over a little bit about the funding. And as we said, we've been working on this for six years and, uh, it was a lot of effort to get this. We started off, uh, trying to get some off, what they call off-system br- bridge money. Uh, we found out it didn't qualify. Uh, so then, uh, the city met with, uh, with ADOT and, uh, the Federal Highway Administration. And I know Steve Stratton was, was involved in that. And, uh, uh, also some of the legislative constituents were involved in, uh, putting together a coalition to, uh, go after some state funding. There were some state funding surplus that was available, uh, for projects statewide. Even ADOT got quite a bit of money out of that, uh, fund. So they were able to get some of that money for projects. This was supported very heavily by the legislature and, uh, were able to get, uh, funding. We got two point, uh, eight one million dollars for this project. Uh, it's the, the good news about the, that funding is that number one, it's state money. So that's good, good news. It's going to save us some money. It doesn't have all the federal requirements. But I do want to stress to the public that that does not mean we're going to in any way shortcut any environmental process. We're still going through, uh, the complete process, uh, of analyzing everything, uh, for the environmental-
So the only thing it really does, uh, we still have, um, we're still, uh, requiring federal guidelines except for federal reporting. So it's true, it, it circumvents the federal reporting. Um, we're still doing everything else. We're making sure that, that our standards and so forth are met. And, um, I think, I think that's the only advantage, uh, don't you, Paul?
We'll, we'll save some on wages. We don't have, uh, Davis making wages, so there, there's some potential savings there. It's more attractive to local contractors. So, uh, that's what our intent is too, to hopefully get local contractors to be interested in working on it. Uh, like I said, the two things we do, we will not compromise is on the environment and on safety. Uh, and also, uh, the third thing we got to be cognizant of, as Jerry's well aware of, is the budget. So we may have to make some adjustments as we go along to, to stay within the budget.
It seems like, seems like a lot of money, two point eight one million, but it's really not when you start replacing a bridge of this size. So, um, you know, we, we have some budget, uh, constraints here. So, um, uh, I think they're ready, Rick.
Okay, so the one last thing on that, the part of the budget constraints, so we, we had anticipated, uh, putting in, uh, a signalized, uh, intersection. Uh, so we had that money in the budget. Uh, since, uh, we've started this study, um, we have, uh, found out that we're going to have to cover some of the, a lot of the costs for the railroad replacement, the crossing replacement. That's the bad news. The good news is that we had enough money, uh, budgeted in there originally, uh, to cover, to cover the majority of that, so.
I think if we're careful, we should be good.
So we're going to have to pay for the design and the construction of the railroad bridge. But the good news is that we don't anticipate, there won't need to be a traffic signal there at that intersection. So, uh, that's the only thing I'd like to point out. So, uh, next, next slide. I just kind of wanted to go over the process, uh, of the project here. As you can see on the screen, we've kind of simplified this project, process. Hit the next one, Matt, that shows the little arrow where, uh, you see the little arrow there? We are here. So we're early in the process. So we're, that we're presenting a concept. So that top right, uh, bubble there with all those sub-bubbles, uh, is basically what we call the scoping phase. That's where we go out and we're looking at different alternatives. Uh, we screen those alternatives and we get it down to, uh, the selected alternatives. And that's where we're at today. We've gone through, we've looked at traffic, uh, reports. We've looked at some geotechnical. We've looked at drainage information. Uh, we've looked at all those components, uh, as far as coming up, what we think is the best recommended solution. Uh, it doesn't mean it's the only solution, but it's the best one, uh, for the constraints that we have for this project. Uh, once we get done with this, uh, what we'll do is we'll have this comment period, uh, till the 15th. Uh, we'll address those comments and then, uh, we'll, we'll have to go back to the city council at some point and receive, uh, approval to move forward into design of this project. Uh, we're not starting design. We're in conceptual, uh, review right now. So once, uh, once we get approval from the city that everybody's okay with this conceptual plan that we've developed, then we'll move into full-fledged design, which is that love, lower right-hand box there, the design phase. Uh, that's really developing the, the documents for contractors to bid on. So, um, that, just a bunch of engineering detail work. Uh, once the concepts deci- uh, decided upon and the footprint is finalized, then we'll move forward into final design.
But once we get our public input, we also need input from our stakeholders.
Right.
Uh, which is the surrounding property owners, the utilities, uh, the, the county, of course. And, uh, and, uh, even though they probably don't have a dog in the fight, but we, we want to make sure ADOT is included in that as well. Which is the surrounding property owners, the utilities, the, the county, of course. And, and even though they probably don't have a dog in the fight, but we, we wanna make sure ADOT is included in that as well. Yeah, yeah, you, but, but we include you in some of the other two. But, but what I meant by that is we don't have the requirement of using ADOT on the bridge. So, but we wanna make sure they're involved because they have the skilled people and so forth that, that we might need some advice with. The county and the biggest is the property owners in the railroad, of course.
Yeah, and we'll kind, we'll get to that later in the presentation. But thank you, Jerry. But what we, once we get the design done, then what we'll do is move into, toward the construction phase. So, we'll put together bid documents that'll be advertised through the city for the construction of the bridge. Contractors will be bidding on that and submitting bids. And then we'll move into that green box there, which is the construction phase. And then the part that everybody's looking forward to is the grand opening ribbon cutting at the end. So, that's pretty much a nutshell of the project. We're hoping to be into design hopefully by August or September. Once we get approval from the city, we'll move into this final design phase and move forward on that. We're hoping to be in the construction phase, I think somewhere around late spring or early summer, if I'm not, if I remember that correctly, Matt, as far as trying to get the construction. So, we're, we're looking almost about a year from now from starting construction of actual turning dirt. So, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna do the process right. We're gonna take our time and get it designed correctly and, and move forward from that. So, next slide. And what we did several years ago is that we worked with the city and we, we looked at alternative bridge crossing locations. And we, we looked at downstream. We looked at upstream. We looked at the existing. And we looked at lining it up with Hill Street. Those, those were basically the four different areas we were looking at. Down, downstream, we get into the, as you, if you came tonight, you saw the train was kinda pulled up and all the lights were flashing. Okay, that's why we wanna stay away. That's why we don't wanna get into those sightings there. So, the downstream was kind of eliminated. Plus, it added more roadway. So, that's more cost. The more, the more asphalt we had to put down, the more cost there is. So, those constraints there kind of eliminated anything downstream. Upstream was eliminated because basically there's not enough room between the, the railroad tracks and the creek to get, to get the abutments in there properly, to get it built with those constraints. We looked at the existing bridge and, and that would be, we could do that, but that would be tough due to the dealing with live traffic. By building it at a new location, we save a lot of hassles with building it on off-site and not having to deal with live traffic. Will there be some? And the tie-ins absolutely can't be avoided. But that was rejected basically for that reason. And the second reason that was rejected was when we did the original meetings with the council, we vehemently heard that they needed to do something about that intersection. So, as an added bonus to this, not only are we replacing the bridge, but we're also gonna improve the intersection and make it a little safer and more understandable for out-of-town visitors. So, that's kind of the side benefit of, of having it at the Hill Street location. So, that was primarily the guiding point of choosing that is the preferred location. Okay? But now, once that was done, then we, we went out and we advertised for design engineering consultants. We selected EPS Group out of Phoenix Tempe area and they are our consultant. Matt Truitt, who you saw earlier, is our project manager and he is the one that is guiding the project as far as design. So, next one, Matt. So, what we, what we've done is we've come up with the design and I'm gonna turn this over to Matt now and kinda let him go through this part of it to tell you what they've come up with as part, part of the design. So, Matt, you wanna take it from here?
As part of the concept.
Concept, the concept, yeah.
Sure. Appreciate that. So, the original concept that we've come up with, we heard what was important to the city. You know, we got a, a design that's offline. We wanted to improve the intersection. So, we looked at which traffic movements were important to emphasize. And it's the, it's the traffic movements that come down into Jesse Hayes Road. So, we wanted to come up with a design that allowed for direct flow of traffic straight onto Jesse Hayes, similar to how it is today. Another thing that we did, whenever we, we come up with an initial concept, you know, you, you, you look at what are the constraints? What are the gotchas that you have to avoid to save on project costs, to, you know, make sure you don't have any obstacles to moving forward? And some of the ones that we identified early on were the existing railroad bridge across McMillan Wash. There are utilities in the area. There are overhead power poles, some gas facilities that are out there. And so, we wanted to identify an alignment that would thread the needle of these different constraints. And so, that was one of the other features that we tried to, to incorporate into the design is something avoided the utilities and railroad facility as much as possible. Another feature that we were looking to add to the design was improving the intersection geometry. As Rick mentioned, the existing Jesse Hayes Road Broad Street intersection is a little bit unconventional. It's three-legged. There are really no perpendicular roadways. It can be a little bit confusing if, if people are encountering it for the first, first time. So, what we wanted to do was create more conventional intersection geometry with approach streets that are at ninety degrees to one another. We also, Broad Street through here is, is a little bit on a curve. So, we wanted to make sure that the intersection itself was straight, at least on this, these legs of the intersection. That helps drivers who are wanting to turn left at an intersection be able to see oncoming traffic a little bit better. So, that was another feature we were trying to build into the design was a typical ninety-degree intersection with good visibility for all approaches. Another thing that we were looking at, as Jerry and, and Rick mentioned, budget. You know, the budget is, is, is good enough to do the project, but it is not rich. So, we're trying to save, excuse me, find ways to reduce costs. We, we, on the up, you know, on the side of the conceptual alignment that we created, we tried to create one where there are no new improvements outside of the pavement of the existing roadways. And then in other areas where we would have to leave the road, the existing roadway footprint, we did so on property that is currently owned by the city. So, there should be no new right-of-way takes north of Penal Creek. It's either city-owned or within an existing roadway footprint. Another feature that we heard about and we wanted to, to make sure we preserved is, excuse me, the on-street parking that currently exists in front of the Connie's Corner Market. So, we wanted to create an alignment that could allow for vehicles to use the space in the roadway as they do today. So, we made sure that the intersection on the south side of the creek was a little bit off of the existing sidewalk to accommodate those existing parking patterns. Another thing that we, we knew about was that up Ruiz Canyon Road, there are heavy equipment rental companies and other businesses that have large trucks that travel through the area. So, we needed to make curves on the roadway were big enough to allow those larger trucks to pass through here. And so, we purposefully designed a little bit larger sweeping curves into some of these intersection or these turning movements to make sure that trucks would be able to, to get through there easily. Those were a lot of the highlights that pushed us, or not push, I say, drove us towards this, this particular alignment concept. But, I mean, this is what we're here this evening for is to present this option, kinda give you our thought process behind it and receive feedback to, to see if, if there's anything else that is important to the residents, stakeholders that we should be accommodating with this design. And I'll pass it back to you, Rick, for the next slide unless you want me to keep going forward.
Yeah, just, we just wanna stress that as Matt said, that we pretty much had to thread the needle. We had to avoid a lot of utilities and other issues, those, those bridges, those other structures. That if we would've got into those, if we get into those, the costs would go way up. So, I, I think this concept that we're showing here, that which is the preferred recommended concept meets all the criteria for making the best intersection and bridge alignment that we can. So, that's what we're here, as Matt said, to, to present this as the recommended concept and, and receive feedback. So, if you wanna go to the next slide? And when we're done, we'll, we'll go back to this slide. So, when you have questions, you can be looking at this map. Why don't you go over this one too, Matt?
Sure thing. So, this goes back to one of my bullet points about trying to minimize any property impacts with the proposed design. So, what we have highlighted on this graphic here are the approximate property lines for the parcels in the area. And it also highlights in blue parcels owned by the City of Globe. And the one, excuse me, in purple belonged to the Arizona Eastern Railway. So, the potential improvements north of the creek, as we stated previously, they're located within the paved areas of Hill Street currently or within the footprint of the city's parcel right here. So, that's why we stated that there should be no new right-of-way required north of Penal Creek. As the alignment would go across Penal Creek, we would need to acquire a new roadway easement from the Arizona East, Arizona Eastern Railway as we cross these, these purple parcels right here. Is one, one bit of a right-of-way impact that we would have. And then on the south side of Penal Creek, we are confining the improvements again to the existing paved roadways. That's by design to minimize any potential property impacts. There, it's, it's our assumption that there, there are existing roadway easements where the roadway exists today. And so, we're going to utilize those same roadway easements that exist there. The, the next slide, if I would forward to that, unless there's anything else you'd like to comment on?
Go ahead.
The other thing that we wanted to, to discuss briefly is that with, with the bridge that we are going to be constructing, some of the elements of that bridge are dictated by the design. You know, we, we will select a bridge that accommodates the drainage, that is compatible with the soils, that ties into the railroad appropriately. So, there's, there's, there are some limitations in what we can choose to go there. It has to meet all of the, the engineering criteria. But where we have a little bit of flexibility to incorporate feedback from the community are the bridge aesthetics themselves. What we have depicted in this graphic are two of the structure types that are likely, are, are the ones that are likely to succeed when we go into final design. I mean, I can, I can say that what we're, what we're seeing in our initial calc, it's very likely going to be a two-span bridge or a two-opening bridge underneath the bottom of it. Where stakeholders and council members and members of the city can, can chime in and influence the design are the aesthetics. And when we talk about bridge aesthetics, we're talking about the general theme or appearance of the bridge itself. One of the mantras of our design team, our structural engineer consort is no more ugly bridges. They want to design structures that are aesthetically pleasing. And so, things that will solicit feedback from both the council and stakeholders and the public are what type of, of theme would, would you be interested in seeing incorporated into the design elements? And the areas where we can incorporate those theming elements are on the sides of the roadway, the little surface treatments on the columns, the color or pigment that we could incorporate into the concrete itself, those types of things. And, and to give you an idea, these two initial sketches that, that our structural engineer came up with, came up with the guidance of, why don't you come up with a couple of railroad-themed structures that are in there? And so, some of the elements that you see repeated in the appearance on these structures make you think a bit about the railroad tracks, you know, the ties and, and those types of things. It's, it's that kind of, those kind of surface treatments that we, we can incorporate into the final product to make it look nice. And that, those are some of the things that we would be very interested in hearing your feedback if you're filling out a comment card, in addition to any other project area, things that you'd like to talk about. But would be, what kind of aesthetics, what kind of treatments would you, would you be interested in? And that could help guide the, the aesthetic treatments as we move forward into the, the formal design.
And, and you may think that it's a bridge, you know, why is this important? The last bridge lasted over a hundred years. So, this is something you're gonna be, this is a monument for the City of Globe for the next hundred years. So.
And to go back to the, the comment on budget that, that Rick and Jerry talked about, we're not talking about adding a, a lot of crazy extra features to the, the bridge. We're just talking about how we, we finish it off so that it, it looks appealing after it's constructed.
It, it really needs to be considered because this is our community. We need to comment on what we wanna see out there. So, and, and Matt's and Rick are right about, we are threading the needle through the utilities, through the drainage structures. And, you know, and we're, we're limited on where we can put the bridge. We're limited on what elevation we can put it at. But what we aren't limited in is what type of bridge we're gonna use and, and how it's gonna look. So, I think that's important to the community. The, the, we, we have reached out and in the previous stakeholder meetings, we addressed some of the curb issues that we talked about for, for the trucks that would go back to Domlin Excavating. We've talked about some of the parking issues that would be for our, our current business owners on that corner. You know, that we also mentioned the right-of-way that we would have to acquire through Eastern Railroad. But what you didn't talk about, Matt, is when we demoed the other bridge, we would be giving that easement back to, to the Arizona Eastern as well. So, it's kind of a, somewhat of a swap there. Trying to think of anything else that we haven't really talked about.
The other thing that I didn't really talk about much, and, and you mentioning the Arizona Eastern Railway, one of the other features that will go into this design, one of the things that we're putting in there will be enhanced safety features associated with the, the new railroad crossing. Currently, all that exists there today are flashing lights to warn vehicles of an oncoming train. The new intersection will still have flashing lights, but we'll also incorporate gate structures to prevent vehicles from crossing the tracks at that time. It's just an added measure of safety.
Okay, the other thing I would add is that, and I get asked a lot about pedestrians, bicycles and that sort of thing. So, we do have in the concept provided a, as you can see here, a sidewalk on the, I guess it'd be on the on the, I guess it'd be on the west side there, northwest side, that accommodates the pedestrian and bicycle traffic. Also, as you can see, there's a crosswalk and we tie in to the sidewalk that's on the other side down here. So we are very conscious of pedestrians. And as I say, safety is our number one consideration on this project. We want to make it safe for the folks here. And as Jerry said, we want to make it safe for the next 100 years. So with that, we're ready to start the question and answer session. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jerry and ask Matt to put up the map of the concept.
So Matt, I'm going to ask you the first question that I've got text to me. And that is, can you address the floodplain? And how is designed and how would we be better or worse than the old bridge?
Sure thing. Let me see, I'm going to... What are you guys seeing right now? Sorry. Let's share, I'm going to share. Can you see the Google Earth image?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You might want to hide the sidebar there so you can get more of the map on the screen there.
Sure. All right. So this whole area is Penal Creek and McMillan Wash. Both of these have floodplains and floodways associated with them. The existing Connie's Bridge down here, I mean, the, and I should note, the floodways and floodplains are not contained within the banks of either of these washes. They break the banks and they go all through the area. In, you know, in the FEMA flood event, all these bridges would be by water, but they're designed to survive that. The existing Connie's Bridge, as it stands today, functions, but it struggles to allow the volume of water you might see in a 10-year storm event. And as drainage engineers, we describe storms in terms of how likely might they be to occur within a given time period? A two-year storm is something, as you might expect, to encounter on a somewhat regular basis. The larger the storm events, the more rare that they are. And so we start assigning names, like a 10-year event. This is not likely, you don't expect to have it every year, but you might once a decade. 25-year, even bigger. And then the ones where floodplains are often delineated from are 100-year events. So it's a once-in-a-century-sized storm. That's the context that we talk about. So with that framework in mind, the existing bridge itself would struggle to meet a 10-year storm event. And one of the reasons why it does so is that there are a large number of piers within the wash itself. And not only that, but the piers are not all perpendicular to the flow of the wash. They're a little bit offset. So it has its, excuse me, a tendency to collect some of the larger debris that's in the area. The proposed structure that we are coming up with is designed to pass both the 10- and 25-year storm events below the structure. One of the reasons why it performs a little bit better hydraulically is we are reducing the number of supports that are physically within the wash itself. One of the things that we do have to do to achieve the better performance though, is in this area, we will be widening the opening below the bridge just a little bit to help the water pass through. With respect to the floodplains and floodways, as I mentioned previously, the floodplains and floodways, the water surface elevation goes, excuse me, all the way back up into these areas. It's already above the roadways that are in the area. So it will overtop the structure and flow on down the road, just like it does with the existing bridge today.
So basically, Matt, if you designed it for any more of an event, it would be standing up above everything else that's flooded. So it wouldn't be functional at all because it would be an island. And, you know, there'd be water all around it because nothing, the roadway, everything is in the flood, under your floodplain.
Yeah, it would, you're absolutely correct, Jerry. We could design the deck of the bridge above the water surface elevation, but both sides of the bridge is going to have to plunge down into the water. The roads that it would tie into would be underwater.
And that was a question that I got, and then I got a text on it today too. Why would you not design it for 100-year? You know, that's why, nothing there is 100-year. That is all in the floodplain. So you get the maximum you can to keep that water flowing in the floodway, which is the main part of the creek underneath the bridge, and try to get as much freeboard as you can.
And then as a sidelight to that, the railroad is there. And so we're constrained by the crossing grade of the railroad. So we have to be tied in there. So that's more or less the controlling point as far as the elevation. Sure, we could go higher, but with that railroad there, so that's forcing us to go a little bit lower to deal with that.
Yeah, the only other, the only other way to deal with that would be to do a bridge over the railroad as well. But then you would have a roadway that's so out of character for all of the other roads in the area that it wouldn't be attractive and it wouldn't fit within any of the budget constraints that are on this project.
And I think we'd still have floodplain issues on both sides of the bridge.
It wouldn't eliminate the floodplain, you're correct, yeah.
So I think we answered that one. So you want to take, do we have any questions? Yes? You want to read them?
Hey, I have several questions from Lorraine Ramos, who's speaking on behalf of the Reese family at Reese Canyon. Lorraine's first question is, she would like to know how the parking will be handled at Connie's. Currently, if someone is parked in the spot closest to Reese Canyon, it creates a hazard for those who are trying to get across the bridge.
I guess you can answer that matter. I can't, why not you?
Everyone, with this last conceptual alignment that we have, we would be preserving the existing parking patterns that are out there today. Now, one of the, one of the improvements, I might call it that, is that exiting Ruiz Canyon Road today, you have to merge into all of, you know, the higher volume of traffic that is coming off of Broad Street and going through the area. Not increasing the traffic at all, but we are shifting that same exact volume of traffic just a little bit further down the road. So it really is no different to the residents here, but at this intersection, it will be significantly less than it is today.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that's important, and also that bridge would be closed. So parking on the opposite side of near Reese is going to be safer because of the less traffic that'll be in that area. Do you not believe that? Matt?
You could use all of this area right here for additional parking.
So we can't take that whole abutment out on Connie's Bridge on the, on this side because it does serve as a drainage structure. Where when water comes down Reese Canyon, Frank, as you know, it runs pretty good down there. And it runs right down that retaining wall next to Connie's Bridge. So that can't be taken out, but the top of that can be used for parking. We'll just have a closure at the end of that. Even though the bridge would be gone, that wall will still be there.
Jerry?
Yes.
And we're probably going to go back and forth because you have the phone, I have the email. And so, and Tom Walsh emailed us at 6:32, so we may have already answered some of these. But I'm just going to read it, and he's got four-part question. Tom says, "I fully support the replacement of Connie's Bridge. And while the aesthetics are important, I'm concerned about four items. Number one, the wash to the east is a potential bottleneck during flooding." I don't know if we've talked about that yet.
So the, Rick, do you have a clue what he's talking about?
The wash to the east.
Where the McMillan Wash. Matt can cover that. You want to cover that, where the intersection of the two washes?
Are we talking about the, is it McMillan?
McMillan, where McMillan ties in.
Okay, so the reason that our concept shows it away from that is that bank has to be scour-protected between the wash and where it would go underneath the bridge. And which it comes through the railroad bridge right now. And that's not going to change. Where out hits the bridge is going to actually hit at a better area than what it does currently. Actually, yeah, so there's plenty of room in there, I believe, don't you, Rick?
Yeah, and as we go through and we get into final design, we'll look at the flows in more detail. And if we need to put some bank protection or something along there to deal with some of those lower flows, we'll look at that, right, Matt?
But our hydraulic engineers are looking at those.
So just to answer the question on Penal Creek, we're going to be opening up this portion of Penal Creek, Penal Wash. And that will extend probably back here. So this, this area right here will be wider than it exists today and will maintain that with bank protection as you're referencing, Jerry.
Yeah, and plus the banks will be protected. So we won't have a eddies that wrote all that out in that area.
And Jerry, the second part of his four-part, the number two is, is the grade required for the bridge is adjustable for the railroad? And I think we kind of talked about the grade of the bridge and the grade of the railroad.
Matt, that's a you question.
Yes, the railroad will dictate what the elevation of the roadway needs to be right here.
And he also asked, what is the optimal grade needed for the bridge height?
We're in the conceptual at this point. So as we determine and get into the 30%, we will determine the elevations on the bridge. I don't think you're ready to call out the elevations, are you, Matt?
We have been looking at them. And, you know, when you say, what is the optimal? I think it's what design criteria are you trying to meet? Per ADOT standards, this bridge should pass a 10-year storm underneath it with a foot of freeboard. And we do that, we do that with extra room. So per that criteria, we're already meeting and exceeding.
With this current concept.
That design check with this current concept. I say the added benefit, as I was mentioning to Jerry earlier, is this should also pass a 25-year storm through the area, which is something that the current one probably doesn't do.
I don't think the current one will pass a 10-year.
I think it'll struggle to do so.
Yeah, I think so too. It won't pass it with a freeboard anyway.
And then one more comment on the grade.
And Jerry, the last comment.
One more comment on the grade, why it can't be done. And if you look at the right there, there's a old railroad bridge structure. We want to avoid that at all costs. We're already having to pay for the railroad reconstruction. And we do not want to pay for replacing that bridge by any means. So that's why we've shifted everything over there. And to change the grade would mean messing with that. And at this point, I don't, I don't have any desire to do that or do any of the other engineers, so. And that kind of clarifies why that's tied where it is.
It really doesn't get to any advantage by changing the elevation because, like you say, the roadway, if it was being flooded, the roadway would be flooded.
Rose would be closed anyway.
Yeah.
You just have a bridge as an island. So the fourth part of his question, can the city pay for the required improvements? And so I don't think that we support, I mean, I think we're saying we don't really need to change the grade. I know that the items on the bottleneck to the east is not part of, you know, what we're working on. It's the bridge area itself. But I think that for the scope of the project, we can afford that. But I think we have to worry about scope creep going into up McMillan.
I think you're going to have a little bit of scope creep because as we get into, we just have to be careful.
Yeah, the city can pay for the required improvements.
The city will pay for the improvements to the railroad crossing.
Absolutely. We are going to meet, we are going to meet all state and federal requirements.
We're having to pay for, the city is having to pay for the design and the construction of the crossing. And I think I mentioned it at the council meeting, and I'll mention it again. There'll be two, probably two separate projects that'll be coordinated to do that because the railroad has responsibility for the crossing. Even though the city's paying for it, they're going to have, I think, one of their on-call contractors actually construct it. So that'll have to be, when we do the construction, we may have to make sure there's that coordinated effort between putting that in and then putting the road and the bridge improvements in. So yeah, that'll have to be coordinated and done at that time.
So one more sidebar, where you got that up on the screen is at the end of this to the north, can you put your arrow up there? We have a project on the tip to redo the pavement out to US 60 beyond from that point on. So that's, we'll hook onto the new construction we just did.
And we can look at that in design. Maybe we don't put new pavement as far as that's showing. Right now, we wade into it under the other project. Those are the things we look at as we move forward in looking at the concept.
So we have, we have that coming up in a few years. So we intend to tie all this together. So any other?
Well, I, that's, I'll go back to Shelley.
Yeah, I have a couple more from Lorraine. Lorraine would like to ask the question, was the original name of the bridge Reese Canyon Bridge? And if so, why did it change?
Well, the name of the bridge is actually Upper Penel Creek Bridge. Everybody refers to it as Connie's. I don't know. I, that was prior to me. I don't know why it isn't that.
I don't think it's formally named Connie's Bridge.
I don't think it's formally named Connie's. That's just what everybody refers to it as. But on the map, what is the front of your ADOT thing?
It says Upper Penel Creek Bridge.
Structure number such and such.
Right.
And so that's the way it's actually officially referred to. But, you know, whatever the city decides to do is up to them.
Will the old bridge be used as a pedestrian bridge?
No, the old bridge will be tore down to open up the flow through that area. We need it out of the way in order to maintain the flow. And also, the city wants to give that property, that easement, back to the railroad in exchange for the easement that we're going to get, so.
Well, and Jerry, to add to that, I know that the, it's, if you maintain the old bridge, now you're adding a crossing rather than relocating a crossing. The railroad would, you know, the railroad doesn't like to see additional crossings. Is that true?
So, yeah, the railroad crossing is one item that's kind of up from the bridge. But the main thing is we want to get rid of the easement for the railroad. And then we also don't want any obstructions in that area to back. I mean, potentially, if you left that bridge, you could backflow up from that bridge all the way into your new bridge, and you'd be in worse shape than what you were before. So, yeah, I mean. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's, that's a bad idea. So, um, I, I, there are, um, pedestrian crossings on the new bridge. And, um, that will have sidewalks coming across it, so, uh, I think we've addressed that on, on the new concept.
This is Lorraine's final question. Why is Dahmalin allowed to drive their heavy equipment up the residential street? Why is it that they are allowed to have their business with their amount, with their amount of traffic on a residential street?
So, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't really know how to answer that, but, uh, um, there's, there's really no, or as traffic, uh, um, yeah, there's residents along that, but there's also businesses along that as well. So, uh, you know, Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody's texting me.
Do you, do you? I, I don't think there's any restrictions for a business, um, driving, um, their trucks up and down that street.
Well, I think, I, yeah, no, I don't, I don't think so. I mean,
I don't think there is.
It's residential area, but there's, it's a mixed-use area.
It's, it's a mixed-use.
And I think, I think I have some of this, um, same question that's, uh, related to that. Um, it says, I noticed that you're making accommodations for Connie's and, uh, uh, Dahmalin Construction seems to have gotten the residential area. And I think we're trying to make it for, accommodate for everybody. We, we have a neighborhood. I think the neighborhood should be disrupted at least, at the least amount as possible. We support all the neighbors. We're not picking or choosing the residents or the, the business side and, um, you know, Connie's. But the, but the other part of the question, um, where are the semis that make deliveries at Connie's going to turn around? We can't address that. There is a little, the area is wider, as I recall.
Well, the areas are wider. I mean, uh,
I don't know if semis drop things off, but I know that their delivery trucks would be more.
There's that area that you, you can pull up and turn around there. Um, that I, uh,
I mean, I, I think those.
I don't see where it's any different to other areas.
I think the delivery truck drivers are pretty creative in how they, um, you know, manage. I see them, you know, doing Safeway and some of the other, um, tricky places.
Do you see any issues, Matt, with the semis turning around and coming back out after deliveries?
Well, with this latest, um, design concept that we're putting forth, we're emulating the existing conditions to a T. And, um, if anything, you know, we're reducing traffic through here, so they, you know, they're, they would be able to come in, back in and pull out if they wanted to. I mean, to be honest with you, I'd have to visit with Connie's and see how they come in today and.
So I, I think what's important.
Hang on a second. I think we might have a technical problem. I'm hearing that we can't be heard. So I'm, I'm, if everyone's to hang on for a second, I'm going to try to pull up the video and see if we're still broadcasting the volume.
Danny's not here.
He had to take a break there. Yeah, no, I think, okay, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Danny, Danny, can you check? I think we're getting word there might be a volume issue. Okay, but I can still, it sounds like we're working.
Okay, so I, I wanted to make another point too, is we're not doing this for the businesses. We're making sure we don't take away from the businesses. We want to make sure we maintain at least the current parking that they have. At least the ability for, uh, Frank to get his, uh, trucks in and out like he, like he does now. I mean, we don't want to, uh, inhibit them. Uh, and, and we, we definitely don't want to take away from the residences as well, so, uh, I, I, I think it's just important to note that we're not doing this for them. We're doing this, uh, with them. Does that make sense?
I wasn't listening.
I, I would echo that. I would say that, um, one of the reasons why we highlight that is not, not to discount the usage of any other individuals, but we are saying that we can accommodate some of the, the larger or, um, y- y- you know, more roadway media. I, I don't know if that's the right term. We can accommodate the larger vehicles through there. If we couldn't accommodate the larger vehicles, then it would be for us, uh, a design flaw. Um, by accommodating larger vehicles, we, you know, by extension accommodate every other, uh, residential vehicle that might want to use the roadway as well.
Matt, can you also, uh, show how traffic will flow through the new intersection of Broad Street there?
And, and before you go, if there's anybody out there having trouble getting a couple of reports of some technical difficulties, if you can email me at council, um, at globalbasee.gov. I, I think we have some buffering issues and maybe some sound issues, but I don't know that it's our feed. It, it may be out there with some internet connections.
So, uh, I think we got some more from Shelley, but, but, uh, let's take a, a question out here. Steve, you've had your hand up four or five times. Uh, come up to the, come up to the mic, Steve, please.
While Steve's walking up, I'll comment real quick on what Rick asked about. As far as traffic operations go, oh, between.
Go ahead.
Jesse Hayes Road will be, uh, free-flowing. Broad Street will be stop-controlled like it is today.
Okay, hang on, man. Matt, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Jerry. I'd, I'd like to make a couple of comments. As, as being one of the people, property owners being affected the most, I'd like to say two things, comment why is, I believe the alignment is the correct one. And, and I'm glad that the, uh, city and the engineering firm is paying attention to the aesthetics. I think they're both very important. However, I have some questions, uh, on the floodplain issue. When you were determining what the effect on the floodplain would be, did you take into account that, uh, almost all of the cottonwoods along Penal Creek Corridor are at the end of their life cycle? Which means they're probably going to end up in the creek? Unless you remove all of them. That would be the other option.
So, uh, as far as, um, the way I would interpret that is there's a potential for large debris in the wash that could get caught underneath the bridge. Is that, would that be a a correct assessment? And then how does this bridge perform better than the other?
No, what I'm asking is, you said there was no detrimental effect or improvement on the floodplain. When you made that determination, did you take into account that the large cottonwood trees along the corridor of Penal Creek are at the end of their life cycle? They're dying. And they will eventually either need to be removed or they will end up in the creek as they fall and are washed down into the bridge.
So maybe I'll answer that, Matt, is, uh, no, we have not considered that. Uh, we do have a, an ongoing, uh, uh, program that we started, uh, since we partnered with the county a couple of years ago where we're cleaning the creeks. Ironically, uh, Paul and I were discussing that today. And, um, and, but it, it's going to become a maintenance issue, I believe, more than anything else.
Well.
Those, those cottonwood trees, if they come down at this point, they're going to be worse going through the old bridge than they would the new bridge.
It would be worse trying to get through the old bridge because there's multiple piers. However, moving the bridge, the new bridge closer to the confluence of Penal Creek and McMillan Wash, it'll have more of a detrimental effect on McMillan Wash and the residents along McMillan Wash. And I'm not quite sure how you can make an interpretation of not affecting the floodplain if you don't take that into account, unless you build the span bridge, which you've said, it's either going to be a span or a double barrel, double box. Which either one is, is an improvement over what we have. Absolutely, I agree with that. However, if you, the trees especially, being caught up in that and backing the water up, and it will directly affect the residents along McMillan Wash. I can tell you in nineteen ninety-two, when it flooded and we were taking trees out, it was going over the top of the bridge. My property did not get back, didn't get water in it. The only time that property's been flooded since nineteen fifty-two is with Caracol Street drains into it. It's not from the creek. It's from Caracol Street. So if, if we build a two-box bridge there, if you do, and it gets plugged with trees, it will back up McMillan Wash immediately rather than having a chance to hit on the surface streets of Broad Street and Penal and Jess Hayes Road. So the, the residents of Caracol Street would be affected quite a bit.
So I, I think that's an important note to make, Matt, is.
We need to look at it, yeah.
Yeah, something we didn't look at, and, uh, and you're right, a double barrel in there that gets plugged would back that up.
And I do appreciate it. And I'm not being, trying to be, uh, critical. I just want to make.
Well, I, I would say there's, there's, um, and, and address this with an email afterwards, but there's a, there's a, a give and take with a single span versus a two-span. You can do a, a single span, but in order for that bridge to function structurally, it has to be a lot thicker. Because you've got to carry more of that load in the reinforcing, um, members.
Absolutely, I understand that.
And so what that does is the, the top of the bridge, as we've, we've talked about, is somewhat dictated by, it was dictated by the elevation of the tracks. So if you remove the, that, that center pier, the bridge has to get thicker and it, it makes the, the space between the bottom of the wash and the bottom of the bridge narrower. So by putting the one pier in, we can take what would need to be like a three and a half foot thick bridge and reduce that by a foot and a half. So you, you open it up that way, and that's, that's one of the ways that we're getting better hydraulic performance. I'd say as far as debris coming from McMillan Wash to the north and east, those would have to pass through the existing five-by-twelve arch pipes.
He's talking about Penel Creek, but I think it's a, it's a point that, that we can make when we, uh, get into design on this.
And I do agree with you on the, on the center, uh, support unless you arch the bridge, and then it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
narrower. So there are options at that too.
And, and also as speaking as a past bridge engineer, there are post-tensioning options that can also be incorporated to, uh, in the deck up.
Although they do cost money and I agree.
They do cost money, but, uh, that's what we're here for, to look at different options.
We do, and I understand you need to stay within your budget, but as a property owner, we have to be concerned about the effects on our properties as well.
I, your, your, your comments are well noted, and we'll move forward then.
Thank you.
Did you have something else?
I do. Uh, on, it appears to be there's a sound wall uh, along Broad Street and then going uphill street. Is that what that is? Or is it just?
Attached hatching?
Is that the, uh, the sidewalk that's currently there?
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Okay. Is there any plans for a, a sound wall to go in on there? Is, is that, that will affect my property being right there on the corner of Hill and Caracol. With, with the traffic being there instead of where it currently is, without a sound wall, it will affect it. So I do have concerns about that.
Okay, well noted as well. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for right now.
Okay. Thea, did you have something before we go back to Texas?
Hi, Thea Wilshire. Um, thank you for correcting that really difficult intersection. That is much appreciated. Um, personally, I had been hoping that the bridge would be moved much further, I guess it'd be south, um, towards Besch, that direction. Um, for a couple of reasons. One, the primary one is how many kids walk Jess Hayes to get up to the community park? And they do not have any sidewalks, and that was something that had been brought to me when I was on council, that families were quite concerned for their kids who needed to walk that. And I thought, gosh, this pro, this potentially could solve that if the bridge was built further south, but it also is extremely logical where you have it. Um, but the other thing that I thought could happen if the bridge was further south is that potentially the existing bridge could be locked but kept as an emergency exit. We had been talking about the challenge if anything happens to that bridge and it's raining, beer tree crossing, you cannot get out. So all the people up in the canyons are stuck. And we were needing, uh, we were needing some redundancy. And I understand what you're saying, Jerry, that currently, I mean, if we have it this close, then yeah, we couldn't keep it there with the multiple pilings. But if it was further, we potentially could, and it could be one of the locked bridge that we have in a couple, at least one place around town that isn't used except it's available as an emergency.
I don't know what that is. I don't.
That, that's a railroad one over by Old Dominion.
Oh, that, that one, uh, is closed completely.
So, in, but, but coming back from what might have been a poor example, I want to come back to the main point, which is this. So if there's a way that there can be some redundancy of, um, exit for folks during an emergency, and if there was a way that we could in some way help that the kids aren't walking, that's what I was hoping would be a part, but I see that we're further along in the planning than I had thought or the concept.
One of the, one of the things, I just commented on that, one of the things that we considered when we moved, we talked about moving it further south is all the right-of-way acquisition we'd have to do. It would drive the price up tremendous on this, uh, because that's all private property. This is one of the few areas that the city and the railroad owns. So that, that's one of the, the reasons.
The biggest reason, as I mentioned in the presentation, if you see where the railroad track is, you can see that gap gets pretty big between the road and the railroad track. So that makes the gap where we need to put the bridge narrower. We, it, it just, we, it'd be tough to get it to fit in there. So we're up against a physical constraint.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate that, and I just hope that the city is still keeping in mind redundancy and sidewalks for kids. Um, another point that I was noting is it, um, Railroad Court, um, Matt, are you able to show that on yours? So Railroad Court is right there, and that little triangle, I don't know what we've called it, but I've always called it Railroad Park. Are you, by changing the alignment, are you taking out the trees that we put in? Is there any chance we can have them put back if they are taken out?
So I don't believe, I think the only change there is, um, it is right on that one corner of the park here.
Okay.
Yeah, any trees that we take out, we can relocate that easily as part of the contract.
Excellent.
I, I think if you look what he's saying right now, it's just, just that one.
Probably the one, maybe two trees, that big one and the little one.
I, I'm pretty sure we could miss this one. That one will be close. We'll have to look and see, but.
But, but in order to get that configuration on, on the through lane, we're going to have to widen that in that area.
Okay. I, if you can move them, great. If you can put that in your budget for replacing, that would be good.
If we can't move them, then, then we'll replant.
Great.
And then the other reason, back on the, uh, previous question, the other reason of not going, uh, upstream is that we wanted to, then we have another offset intersection and it's confusing again, so. Uh, there again, there was a lot, we looked at a lot of criteria. I mean, we didn't just arbitrarily do that. There was a lot of hot cross into that, and we met with the city and we went through that, so. But we do appreciate your comment.
But actually, the one that made the most sense, uh, besides this, it would have been north of this and across the railroad yards there. And, um, and we, we discussed that one pretty thoroughly, except the cost just drove it completely away from us because we had.
A lot more road to build.
We had, and we had to buy all the right-of-way through there, so.
Okay. Um, you had asked on aesthetics, um, one thing if you would please put into your considerations. I believe the city has gotten a grant to look at extending the historic district. So if there was a way that that bridge could have a historic appearance, and personally I would vote for railroad theme because of the railroad yard, the fact that that used to be the turnaround, that it's the railroad court, it's, I, I love that idea. I think that was a great idea by you guys, and I just hope that you'd also make it historic-looking if we're able to extend our historic district. Thank you.
I thank you. Appreciate it. Matt, did you get all those notes?
I did, and I'll probably watch the video again later.
Okay. Stephen?
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Yeah, long time no see. Uh, I, I just wanted to mention, and I'm sure you've looked at it, but even though there isn't conventional money available, ADOT Corporation Commission for the railroad crossing. And, and Rick, I'm sure you know that there is another pot of money for freight trains available at times. And I think that, uh, there, there may possibly be some money in that. And, uh, I believe Vicky Beaver can help you with that.
And I also, uh, Matt is working with a, a railroad consultant, and, uh, they have a, a person on their team that's. and they have a person on their team that's a railroad expert. And I believe you guys are looking at those options as well, right, Matt? I know you're writing, but we are funding options through Vicky Beaver, through the railroad itself. The railroad doesn't have any money. They're a poor railroad. We understand that, but there are other federal pots and that's what Matt and this.
So the more money that we can offset there, the more money we can put in to other things.
That's exactly where I was headed. But I wanted to make sure you knew there was that other pot of money.
We would appreciate some cooperation from you on that.
Be more than happy to help any way I can.
Thank you. Put them on the spot, didn't I? Go ahead.
So I did have a question from Grasshat.
Joe Scammo.
And he says, clear span versus single pedestal? With a center pedestal, the inflow from McMillan Wash, I thought three and three.
Can you hear me? Let me start over here. This is from Scammo, Mr. Scammo. Clear span versus single pedestal? With a center pedestal, the inflow from McMillan Wash during high flood period would create increased load on western far side portal under the bridge?
I think that's what Steve had already thought of.
I think we addressed that.
We had addressed that, yeah.
But those are considerations that we have to address during design. And yeah, I think that's important. I think that that Matt's got all those things down. Correct, Matt?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I do have one more quick one. We may have, again, I'm a little behind on my reading of my emails here. But this came at 7:09 again from Tom Walsh. What is the year flood the bridge is designed for? Is it designed for five year, 10 year, 100 year?
It's designed, A.D.O. minimum is 10 years.
10 years.
For this type of a roadway, it would be 10.
Yeah, 10 years and and
10 with free board.
More than meet that. Matt's thinking that this concept would probably meet a 25 year.
Okay, so.
It'll pass 25, 10 with free board, yes.
All right, thank you. And that's all the questions I have so far.
And the current bridge does not meet the 10 year. Steve, you want to come?
Just history, okay? We like to, oh. The event in 92 was a 100 year event. And the current bridge did take care of that, other than the trees blocking it up. Had the debris not been there, that bridge would have handled that 100 year event. So that that needs to be understood that it, I want to make that the new bridge will at least flow as much as the old bridge at now.
Oh, more, more. But you and I both know that a 100 year floodplain is probably never going to be out 100, you know, never going to flood.
No, in my lifetime, I've seen multiple 100 year, two 500 years and 1,000 year events, so.
Yeah. So I would like to go back to the texts. You have some more texts.
No, that's it.
Oh, good. Anything else? Frank, did you have a comment or? Just, okay, you're soaking it up? Frank's one of our stakeholders as well, so he'll be involved in other meetings as well, so.
So once we get all the comments from this, we'll have another stakeholder meeting. We'll go over these comments with the stakeholders and weigh all this out.
So I want to make one more plea to the public while we're on YouTube and so forth is, please reach out with your comments. We will answer them. Send an email on the, you want to give those one more time?
Yeah, the the email addresses that we're using is a standard one here. It's council@globeaz.gov. And we'll be taking emails through the August 15th.
Through August 15th. Please send them to us. We haven't started on the actual design yet. When we jump into that, we need your comments. And and yes, we will consider everything you send it. And we will send you an email back telling you either why we think that's a great idea or why we can't use it. In fact, Rick will make that commitment to comment back to all the emails.
So and then maybe just for the record, a couple of, you know, lightning round questions. When when do you think we'll be breaking ground on this?
I think that probably this time next year is is a good estimate. I think probably, you know, by the end of next year, we should have a bridge.
So we'll grand opening ribbon cutting end of next year?
Maybe.
Disruption to local traffic during construction?
There's going to be hardly any disruption because Connie's Bridge will stay open, what I call Connie's Bridge stay open during construction. The only closure would be why we tie things in.
You can see we're doing some significant work on the upper end on that intersection, some paving grade work there. And then the paving on the bottom part there, those will be impacting those two areas.
All the demo work will be done after we open the new bridge.
And then the last one, I remember briefly in the early 80s when they were trying to replace the Mill Avenue Bridge and they had a flood event in the middle of the construction. Is there any chance that this bridge construction be disrupted?
There's always that chance, isn't it, Frank? Yeah, there's always that chance. And, you know, we we try to plan for that. And, you know, I used to have a professor professor in college that says, make it rain. You never can. I determine whether it's going to rain that day or not. So go out and start your work and make it rain. And, you know, and that's kind of the way we do construction is is we go out, do the best we can. And every contractor has a contingency plan for rain.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, Frank.
I did have one comment.
Okay.
If I could.
Yep.
What's the weight limit on the bridge? A box or a clear span?
So Matt, that's a that's a you question.
I probably need my structural to give you the exact answer, but they will be the same. We're going to make them better than what's there today, but I'll be honest with you. I'd have to.
It'll meet A.D.O. It'll meet A.D.O.
On the answer, on the actual weight.
The clear span will just be thicker. It'll have the same same weight limit. And the double barrel, as Steve called it, is will have the same weight limit. It'll just be thinner, the decking, so. I think you'll still be able to get in and out, okay?
Yeah, it'll be it'll be the state standard weight limit, truck size. I think it's an HS20 semi truck. I think it's 120,000 pound with with factors of safety on top of that.
Yeah, I can get you the exact answer.
So Matt, can you reach out to Frank? You have his email. He's one of our stakeholders and get that back to him?
I will.
Thank you. Anything else from the public?
So just one last quick update. I did upload the handouts up to the website, city website at globeaz.gov. I'm trying to get the, and the PowerPoint also. It's the PowerPoint's like a 24 megabyte, so it may take a little while to load.
Oh, let me convert the PowerPoint to a PDF and we can put that up there.
I did convert it. Yeah, I'm sorry.
He did convert it.
And if you can lighten it, that would be good, but.
The PowerPoint.
I can probably get that file size down for you.
Yeah, the animation is probably.
Oh, yeah, the animation.
The animation is probably the big thing.
But they but they are.
Animated.
They are available now. And again, council@globeaz.gov for all your questions, and we will respond to those. And the video should be posted. The video should be posted very, very soon. It takes a little while to get it finalized and up.
Well, thank you all for coming, helping us with with this project. Remember your mask, be safe. And and hopefully you'll you'll be able to participate in some of these other meetings that we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good to see you, Thea.